Good evening and welcome to the eighth twenty twenty five meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the fine of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would ask that we take a moment of silence at this to reflect on all of the events going on. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being recorded by LCAT, and if there's anyone else in the audience reporting, if you could identify yourself. Okay, seeing none, public comments. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment this evening? Want to see anyone online or the physical audience? Counsel comments. Any counselor with a comment this evening? Okay, town manager report. Hi, Tom.
Good evenings.
Good evening.
How are we doing? Um, so, uh, as, as usual, the, uh, the first item here is the, uh, the last two weeks of reports from the, the new high school. Uh, still, still on time and on budget. Uh, I, I love saying that out loud. Uh, but yeah, just continual progress over there. It's, uh, it's a sight to be seen. Um, big, big news, FY twenty six draft budget, uh, submitted March thirty first. And we had our first finance oversight, uh, me oversight committee meeting, uh, last week on Wednesday. Um, the, the oversight committee will be chaired by Jim Broderick and the vice chair is Don Starks, joined by Rich Fuchero, Counselor Hill and Counselor Jones. Uh, obviously, Kyle will be, uh, ex officio member of the committee. Uh, with looks like concurrent town council meetings, so I'm sure we'll get to see everybody, which is, which is nice. So the first meeting was just sort of a general overview of the draft submittal, which essentially we'll have in a little while here as well. And they'll continue through April and the first week of May, uh, to, to really dive, dive deep into the budget. Um, and, uh, pick apart him's logic. Or my logic, my logic, my, my logic. Uh, and then they'll offer their recommendations, obviously, to the council, um, in advance of their first meeting in May. Um, and, um, so I've been threatening this for quite some time now. Um, I'm happy to, uh, introduce our library director, Katie McGonigal. Uh, uh, I've, I've been wanting a special guest appearance for a long time. I'm happy, uh, that it's library week this week. And Katie is here to, uh, tell us all things library weekend, East Long Meadow Public Library.
Thank you.
Without further ado.
Well, kind of I said.
Of course.
Name an address for the record. Just kidding. I don't think.
You're wiring. Oh goodness, here we go. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to the town council on behalf of the East Long Meadow Public Library. My name is Katie McGonigal and I'm the library director. I am here today during the American Library Association's National Library Week, which runs this year from April sixth to April twelfth. National Library Week is an annual celebration highlighting the valuable roles libraries, librarians, and library workers play in transforming lives and strengthening our communities. From the American Library Association's National Library website, National Library Week website, um, the theme this year is drawn to the library. Millions of people across the country visit their libraries every week. What's the draw? Everything. From young families stopping in for play and storytime, to students sketching out their next creative project in a makerspace, to seniors seeking tech help and everyone in between, libraries of all kinds help us connect the dots from one part of our journey to the next. Chart your next literary adventure by browsing the stacks or joining a book club. Let an author color your imagination at an author talk. Outline your big business idea at an entrepreneur workshop, or trace your history with your family's genealogy resources. Make your mark and get involved with your library by volunteering or spreading the word. I hope my presentation before town council this evening will also be an annual occurrence. So I can provide you with an update on our community public library, as well as library happenings across the Commonwealth and across the country. There are many ways the library staff encourage our community to stay informed and engaged with the East Long Meadow Public Library's mission, vision, and values. Our library's mission. The East Long Meadow Public Library supports lifelong learning, literacy, and cultural enrichment by providing access to information, knowledge, and ideas through its collections, services, and programs. Our vision. The East Long Meadow Public Library aims to be central to the town's growth and development, responsive to the needs of the community, and committed to quality service through positive interactions and a welcoming environment for all. Our values. The East Long Meadow Public Library values are those held by the American Library Association. Access, equity, intellectual freedom and privacy, public good and sustainability. This is included in the strategic plan executive summary, which is part of the packet that was provided for you. The East Long Meadow Public Library plays a vital role in fostering lifelong learning, literacy, and cultural enrichment within our community. During twenty twenty four, the library welcomed over one hundred thousand visitors, checked out more than a hundred and thousands, hundred and seventy thousand items in physical and downloadable format, issued over six hundred and sixty new library cards, provided hundreds of hours of volunteer opportunities for teens and adults for service credit, community service, and tax abatement, and responded to nearly seven thousand reference inquiries. Our programs serve patrons of all ages, both in our library's programming spaces and through outreach efforts across the community. Library staff provide patrons and residents a variety of methods to stay informed about the valuable services and resources provided by our library. Patrons are encouraged to just, to subscribe to our weekly newsletter to learn about and register for upcoming programs, or through our online calendar linked to our website. Patrons can also sign up for Wowberry to receive updates on the latest additions to our collection. There is also a monthly Board of Library Trustees meeting held in the library's conference room, which includes a director's report with monthly library updates. Folks can enroll in Beanstalk, an online logging platform, to participate in one of our online reading challenges. And of course, we have our community-wide summer reading kickoff event, which will be held this year on June tenth from four thirty to six thirty. The summer reading program will begin in June and run through mid-August, and we once again anticipate more than twelve hundred participants. I hope you all can come to our kickoff. In your packet, you will find the children, teen, and adult April program calendar, flyers about the East Long Meadow Public Library, including how to use your CW Mars account, hoopla, Libby, museum and park passes, and information on the new Adopt a Book program where patrons can dedicate a book to our collection in memory or honor of another person. East Long Meadow Public Library aims to meet the diverse needs of all those we serve. Through the CW Mars Consortium and the Commonwealth Catalog, our library is able to connect with libraries across the state for resource sharing. Items from books to DVDs to puzzles are delivered to patrons at their home libraries. Additional resource sharing is available throughout the state through Libby, where patrons are able to access downloadable content shared by seven other library networks, including the Boston Public Library and the Minuteman Library Network. Our libraries provide invaluable resources and spaces for our patrons. Libraries are a place for people to learn, connect, feel safe, and get involved. During National Library Week, it is crucial that we all come together to demonstrate our commitment to libraries and the essential services they provide. To help libraries meet the needs of patrons, each year, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners launches a campaign to raise awareness and advocacy for libraries during their fiscal year agenda budget request. This year's theme for support is empowered by libraries. This is an opportunity for local and state representatives and leaders, libraries, municipalities, library-adjacent groups, and patrons to endorse and support libraries, and which all are encouraged to tell us how your libraries helped you. In your packet, you will find information regarding the MDLC's Empowered for Libraries campaign, as well as their FY twenty six budget request. I hope each of you have the opportunity to tell us how your library has helped you. You'll find a postcard in your packet for this purpose. There's actually four in case. And I look forward to posting this in our display in the lobby. Thank you for your time this evening. Our community appreciates your continued support of the library. Together, we can continue to ensure that libraries remain a vital resource for our community.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask a question.
Sure.
Library cards.
Yes.
And you should six hundred and sixty new. Is there any fees or anything associated with getting one?
When you get your first library card, there is no fee. Um, one of my future requests is that the replacement fee right now is two dollars, and I'm hoping to have that waived going forward. That's something that.
Talk to the fee people.
Yes. I hear there's like a time where that gets submitted that we make those requests to change the fee structure. Correct. So that's a request. Uh, but one of the nice things about the CW Mars, um, there's like an app that you can download, and you can actually put your library card on your app. So even if you don't have your physical card, we accept like the app and we can actually scan your virtual library card that way.
Awesome.
It's great.
Well, all I've heard is good things about our library. So keep up the good work.
Team effort. We work really hard.
Question, Katie. My library card was issued to me probably before you were born. Do I get in, do I apply to get a new one?
You don't have to. Nope. Um, so the way that the library cards work is, um, each patron's account will expire every two years and we just update your account. But we have people that have had their cards for thirty, forty years and they just keep bringing them back.
I will tell you, uh, a lifetime story that my two-year-old granddaughter was, uh, visited the library yesterday with another woman who was caring for her, uh, granddaughter as well, and came back and said, that place is rocking. It's amazing how many people, um, are there at ten thirty in the morning, you know, the younger parents or grandparents with, with kids and seniors and, uh, of course, during, it was school time, so not very many kids, but she said, I'm just in awe of all of the resources that are available. So kudos.
Thank you. And we have an incredibly supportive community. So we have our regular patrons that come every day or every week. And then we have people from outside of East Long Meadow, because everyone's welcome at the library. So we have a ton of patrons that will come and just use our space or come for programs or borrow our items. So it's, it's really nice that we just have a lot of really great community support and traffic.
Wonderful.
Are you still doing your newsletter?
Yes.
I was getting it for a long time and I'm off the list. I don't know how.
I don't know. Get back on.
Because the.
Did you have an overdue book?
I did. Actually, I lost my library card.
Two dollars.
I think the council had all, you know, expressed an interest, and I think it's amazing to get this newsletter and see what's happening. Then your four walls.
We'll do that. Yep, you have my pleasure.
That's something I can probably add to my packet every quarter. When do you, does it every month?
What's that?
Your, your newsletter?
Yes, it comes out weekly.
Oh. That's why you got four postcards.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, thank you for everything. Thanks for, for being the inaugural.
Thanks. I'll be here every year.
Yeah, it's quite a, it's quite a space. Our, our public libraries, um, can't say enough about Katie and her staff and what kind of environment that, that this space is. It's, it's pretty amazing. Uh, we got some upcoming events. Obviously, we just talked about National Library Week is this week, the sixth through the twelfth. Birthday festivities, April eleventh, one to four thirty, and April twelfth at nine AM, the COA. Uh, the fishing derby is at Heritage Park on April nineteenth, that's starting at seven AM. Uh, the recreation has an egg hunt on the nineteenth at nine AM on the rail trail. And then we have our, uh, very exciting American Revolution ceremony, uh, April nineteenth at ten AM on the town hall. Uh, there's a flyer in here for that. We're gonna start posting those around town. Yeah, there it is. And that's, uh, that's it for the report. I finally had one that got you to your six fifteen. That's because I brought some.
The money too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any questions for any councils? Hey, seeing none, we move to public hearings. We have a six fifteen public hearing this evening. So this is a public hearing for liquor license transfer for Aikura Asian theme located at six hundred North Main Street. The council members are Tim Leiden, Kathy Hill, Anna Jones, myself, Connor O'Shea, Marilyn Richards, Ralph Page, and John Torsia Unzun. And I would ask that we read the legal notice into the record.
Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty eight of the general laws that Aikira Asian House LLC, the Aikira Asian House has applied for a transfer of an on-premises all-alcoholic beverages license currently held by Wee Management LLC, DBA Aikira Asian House, located at six hundred North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty five at six fifteen PM, in the Council on Aging media room, three twenty eight North Main Street, East Long Meadow. The hearing can also be attended via webinar. For the council, Jeanne Arcogletti, Town Clerk of the Council.
Thank you, Jeanne.
He declined?
Oh, interesting.
It's like, oh, never mind, there he is. He keeps pressing decline. Yeah. Maybe I can. You send a note when you accept. I don't know if we have chat enabled.
There he goes. Yeah, then no.
Thank you. That's challenged.
There we go.
There you go.
Good evening.
My name's Don, on behalf of the applicant.
Great, thank you. Would you mind providing a brief overview of the requests before us this evening?
Yes, uh, the, the business is in place, operating, um, one of the owners, there's two owners right now of the, of the transfer or license transfer or uh, which is Wee Management LLC, DBA Aikira Asian House. The, one of the owners, one of the, uh, members of that LLC has started his own LLC, Aikira Asian House LLC, and is, uh, acquiring the other half ownership. So it's basically just a transfer of half ownership to whole ownership. Um, so the, the, the business is in place, staying in place, and will, will continue ongoing as Aikira Asian House.
Great. Thank you for the overview. Does any counselor have any question for the applicant? Okay. At this point, the, it is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the public audience that would like to offer any input. Hey, seeing none, I will close the public input portion of the hearing. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna? Yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Thank you. And then I'll entertain a motion. Oh, and John, sorry.
Yes, yeah.
And then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the transfer of an on-premises all-alcoholic beverage license currently held by Wee Management LLC, doing business as Aikira Asian House, located at sixteen hundred North Main Street to Aikira Asian House LLC, doing business as Aikira Asian House with We and Nai as the manager.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Just a quick correction. Um, you said sixteen hundred North.
I'm sorry.
Six hundred.
It's six hundred.
As read.
As read.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
And I'm a yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we are done with public hearings. Orders of the day, we have one licensing matter to approve a one-day liquor license, and I believe the applicant is here if he wants to provide a brief review or.
Other everybody.
Yourself?
Chair, before we start, I am gonna recuse myself from this, uh, primarily our relationship.
Thank you, Ralph.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Wanted to mention that there is a typo on the date. It should actually be Saturday the twelfth. So that's, I apologize for that.
Oh, okay.
Um, so what, we're, we're basically looking for a one-day liquor license to, uh, um, operate between eleven and four PM on the Saturday the twelfth. Uh, and kind of a celebration of the Earth Day cleanup that'll happen in the morning, um, in partnership with the RC five. They're gonna have a tent there, some vendors will be there. And, um, yeah. Um, we'll talk about all the trash and things we moved from the property that we're gonna be on. The sixty-one, um, twenty-yard dumpsters that we removed. So I think we, uh, did quite a Earth Day cleanup for, uh, the past year over there. So for us, it's a kind of a celebration of that as well. So.
Great. Thank you for the overview. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Excuse me?
Sure.
The application, Jason says eleven to five PM.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So.
For the clarification?
As written. Right, exactly. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I motion to approve a one-day liquor license application for one-way brewing for an Earth Day cleanup and celebration at the farm at Hawks Landing, eight nine six Summers Road, on April the twelfth, twenty twenty five, eleven AM to five PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
And Ralph? I've stayed. Thank you. It's approved.
Thanks, everybody. Hopefully, we'll see you there. Should be a good day of cleanup. Hopefully, the weather holds up and it'll be good.
Hey, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, for financial matters, we have the town manager's presentation of the FY twenty six budget draft.
Yay, presentation. They're lights.
No.
I feel like we've been through it like ten times already. Yeah, so, uh, obviously, we, we presented to you, um, back on March thirty first via email, uh, and once in a public meeting last Wednesday, um. So this was sort of a challenging draft budget, I suppose. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll go through some of the highlights, and if there are any specific questions, I mean, we, I could talk about this all night, to be honest.
You don't want to go there.
You ate your turn.
Challenge accepted.
Challenge accepted. Um, no, obviously, I think it, it's been pretty standard the last few years to, to we, we have a, a process sort of in place, which, which involves, you know, the departments, uh, submitting their budget for what we call level services, which is essentially, uh, the same, whatever, whatever you gotta do to, to provide the same services without, without anything additional, except for contract, uh, increases. And so as the data started coming in, we noticed quickly that there were some, uh, some of our bigger expenses were, um, well, larger increases than maybe we thought or would desire, mainly, uh, health insurance, property insurance, and, and retirement was particularly, uh, a big increase this year. We sort of immediately shifted gears to try to trim, trim off some more fat. Now, I think we, we all remember last year that we did a lot of that. So we're, we're, we're pretty much at bare bones already and, and trying to be creative on ways to sort of get this budget down to somewhere where, where we can all, um, operate efficiently, yet try to keep our costs down. I think we, we, we ended up peeling off just over a million dollars from level one to level two, which is the submittal. And, you know, we, we, we tried to keep most of our historical outlooks in place. For instance, trying not to tax our residents to the levy. This is something that East Long Meadow has been very good at. Uh, haven't done since I can remember. Um, and so we were, we were able to accomplish that again, obviously. Termining down some expenses and, and, uh, examining our revenues to the point where we could sort of balance that equation a little more in our favor. So, uh, all that to say, uh, the, the tax rate here at this draft budget is, uh, right now estimated at nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, of course, everyone knows that, uh, we have a portion of that, uh, is paying for our new high school. Uh, that was a dollar eighty-seven. Well down from what we thought it was going to be when we were talking about the, the new school. Um, but, but still, uh, a significant, uh, expense to the taxpayer. Um, we, we've, we're up to about eighty-three percent of borrowing. So, uh, there will be yet another increase to that number. Uh, but most of it is here in this dollar eighty-seven. We also have included, uh, as per our policy, uh, one and a half million dollars in general fund capital layout. And then an additional two million dollars between the, uh, enterprise funds and, and other funding sources, grants, and things of this nature. So, uh, we were able to uh, stay in line with our policy and still get a lot of much-needed projects done, uh, in this submittal. Um, and so again, there, there, as I, as I kind of joked by, but I love the word because I'm a math thork. Uh, there are many permutations of a municipal budget, all of which we've been through, I think. Uh, but, um, this is the, the, this is the, the best fiscally responsible budget to, that we put forward, uh, in our opinion, in my opinion. Um, and that, that's sort of what we submitted. We, we have posted it on the town manager's website. On the, the town page, but in the manager's tab, there's the, the FY twenty, a lot of information. Um, but I look forward to sort of discussing all of it, uh, at the financial oversight level and then, uh, back again at, at council level. But, yeah, that, that, that's sort of where we're, where we're at right now with the, with the draft budget. Um, and again, I'll answer any questions, uh, that, that you have.
Thank you, Tom. Does anyone have any?
To the extent that you may be able to answer this, we know that Governor has submitted her budget uh, and the resultant cherry sheet estimates based on what she knows at this time. It then will go to the Senate and then the House, and then a joint committee?
Is that, I think so, right? Is there, there's three iterations?
The Senate and then the conference committee.
The conference committee. And so historically, that goes up and down and it changes. Do, do you have any sense yet which way the winds are blowing? Do you have?
I don't. And I, I, I'd hate to venture a guess at this point. Uh, typically, we won't see many deviation, uh, anything that would drastically change our budget. Uh, I think you'd be talking plus or minus one or two percent here and there. And, and like last year, for instance, I think chapter seventy went up, but they took it from undesigned government aid. So our, our total number didn't change by that much. So, um, I, I there, there are, I've heard a bunch of conversations. Uh, there is obviously, uh, a lot of conversations about education. Uh, there, obviously, we have a, a, a new president in the White House, and there are policy changes all over the place, but we don't know anything. And, you know, it's, we can't really speculate and or panic about anything at this point. I think we just kind of think uh, status quo and, and take care of our business.
Thank you.
Yep.
Through the chair?
Sure.
So if the cherry sheet estimate is higher than we're anticipating higher than what we actually get?
Yep.
I'm assuming that's the reason we're leaving some cushion in the levy limit, and can we adjust during the year as we go along, or is it once we vote a budget and all of a sudden the state aid, instead of being, you know, fifty million, comes in at forty million and all the towns are left hanging? Can we still borrow against the levy up until the end of the year? Or how does that work?
I should probably let Kim answer that question, though.
Uh, typically, by the time you set the budget, we are in the last level. So any changes that would happen kind of between when finance oversight reviews it and then town council approves it, we're usually up to, I think, the Senate point, if not the conference committee at that point. So like any of those changes would be reflected in this budget. If something happened later where they came out and just said, oh, we're pulling funding, we're actually reducing what everybody's getting, everybody's gonna be in the same boat, but you would be. But you would be able to raise and appropriate at additional meetings because, you know, you're allowed to do that as opposed to a town meeting. So you would be able, if we have money in the levy, you'd be able to raise and appropriate at a regular meeting.
Okay. That was my question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, like I said, God forbid something happens. And that's one of the reasons why you leave some cushion in your levy limit if you can, just in case unexpected things happen.
Yep. Well, that and again, that statement that at the beginning that you're not taxing all the way to that maximum. And I think it's a good message to send the community that you're not just doing all the way to the max every single year, tax, 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 right? So there's a lot of good reasons to have that excess levy. And that's why we we try to leave as much as we can in there.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thanks for the presentation, Tom.
Thanks.
That was easy.
And following along with budget, the next item under financial matters was the third quarter F Y twenty five budget update.
Yeah. Same, I'm sure, a lot of the same questions, right? I mean, so nice typically at this point is in a deficit, which it is. A lot of the other ones that are over seventy five percent where they should be are because the money's been encumbered. And will be there for the rest of the year. But, you know, nothing stood out to me, Kim. I don't, I don't think there was any red flags there. I don't know if anybody had any questions about anything in particular. But most of the departments are right in range. And then the ones that aren't, it's just because of the encumbrance. So there's still an available balance in that account. It's just all encumbered for the rest of the year.
Good.
Any questions from anyone?
So our legal budget, I noticed that we look pretty good in it this year.
We do.
Compared to the past few years, that's a good sign.
I learned a lot last year. No, I'm just kidding. No, there was obviously special circumstances last year, but I will plug our new H R director. That, I had to make a lot of calls to legal last year, plain and simple.
Yep.
And now we have a professional in that office that answers those questions for the employees and me. And it's great. That's how it should be working. So, yeah, there was a couple of factors there, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Audrey's impact on that budget.
A good setup, huh?
Well, she's certainly better than I was as the H R director, I'll tell you that much.
Thank you.
Yeah, everything seemed to look in line. There wasn't anything that really stood out other than some of those positive things. For any other comments or questions? Okay. Moving on, we have accepting donations for a motion.
Make a motion to accept a second and third quarter donations to the town per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty three A totaling seventy two thousand nine hundred and thirty two dollars and seven cents for the following amounts: library, one thousand four hundred and ninety one dollars, Council on Aging, sixty nine thousand six hundred and thirty one dollars and seventeen cents, Fire Department, one thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and ninety cents.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I think it's wonderful, the donations that have come in. Absolutely amazing and greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I echo that same sentiment. I feel like sometimes in previous quarters, it doesn't seem like it's a lot, but then when you see like seventy two thousand dollars, that's
That's huge.
It's incredible, but wonderful for those departments because they do a lot of impressive services for the community. Hey, any other discussion? Yep. So seeing none? Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, everybody on that list.
Zach.
Appreciate you.
Next, we have approval of the March twenty fifth open session minutes.
I move to approve the March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five open session minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
And I'm a yes.
Motion's are approved. Old Business, we have continuing the discussion on a proposed bylaw regarding transparency for East Long Meadow employee contracts and salary. So at our last meeting, Ralph had provided us a draft. Some of his thoughts in there. I didn't know if anyone had any other comments, questions, concerns, or if we wanted to move this along to the bylaw committee for any other review and revision before it comes back to the council. Sure, Marilyn.
Maybe it's simple, but there's a lot of information that's being requested with this bylaw. How do we do it? I'm serious. Do we, I mean, is there, all of this information is in one computer? You can just move it to another computer? Or do we have to have a person, you know, download this or put this into a document?
So truthfully, like everything else, updating information on the town website is a constant process. And obviously, sometimes doesn't happen as quickly as maybe it could. But, and I don't want to downplay it and say that this is easy. This will be some work for people to do. But again, I feel like it's probably worth it to the community for us all to say, yeah, here's all our stuff.
I don't have any problem with that.
Yes, no, there will be some work, of course. And I think I'll say, I feel like we brought this up a month ago. The first time you guys talked about it. And we went back to the office and there was a Freedom of Information Request for everybody's salary from two thousand twenty four. So the information
Information.
The information usually has to get put together anyway.
Okay.
But yeah, no, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be some work. And we're going to have to make sure we update it every time we do something. But I think it was like, it's like the fee thing now, right? Like, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do this every time, right? My suggestion would have been, and I don't know how everybody feels, but the fiscal year thing. And I know that doesn't make sense to the public probably. But because we're doing all of our stuff on a fiscal year, and this says calendar year. If there was some discussion about maybe making it fiscal, it might just be easier for us to chunk it out. But again, somebody asked for a calendar year, they got the information. Somebody ran a report in Munis and put it in, exported it into, it's some work. But again, we just have to, as we're updating our policies and procedures and the way we do business, we just have to remember these points in time where we have to, oh, you know, the two meetings in June, we got to update the fee schedule, right? First reading, second reading, we're good to go July one. And we'll just have to remember as we're getting close to the end of the calendar year that when the calendar flips by March first, we got to make sure, it's just another thing to do. But, and I think once we get it done, updating it will be, will be, will be a little easier. But thank you for the consideration. Yeah, I mean, it will be some work. But but I think the transparency piece is really the part of this. As I'm having these conversations, most everybody has this on their website. Whether you can find it or not with a simple search is another thing. But we have a transparency tab right up top. It's got the open checkbook stuff. Like, there's, we already have the tab on the website. So this will just be one more thing that we chunk in and make sure that we were keeping it updated. Yeah, I think, I think the, I think, I think the, the information itself far outweighs whatever extra work anybody would have to put into updating it. Because I think it's important for the community to know that we're committed to let them see everything we're doing. I think that that's the most important part of this public sector that we're in, I think.
Okay.
So through the chair?
Sure.
So the reason I suggested the calendar year is, I believe, typically, you get your W two or your tax forms once a year. And my thought process was if the town's already got to print those out in January for the federal government, all that information's current right there.
Yep.
And
Yeah.
Easier.
Yeah. And all that are going to be on fiscal, but
Yeah, well, the contracts are set up a little bit different. It's basically so when you ratify or approve a new contract, once everything's all done, it's been accepted and all, then it gets loaded up. And that's every three years.
Yeah.
Contracts, I think. So it's not something you have to renew every single year because it lasted three, so.
Yeah.
That was my thought.
Okay.
Try and make it a little bit easier for you.
No, no, yeah, again, I feel like
No, we're not going to do ten year contracts.
No. I'm guessing, I'm guessing you're not going to give me permission to sign one of those.
Got that right.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think this is important. And whether it's bylaw or just a way of doing business, either way, I think a bylaw always makes sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing when we're supposed to be doing it. So
Yep.
We'll figure it out.
So I brought up the last time, did some about adding language, maybe that says, you know, other public documents are available through, you know, public records request or something like that. I don't know if in this we want to add that or not. Again, more open for suggestions. If you guys think of anything. I'm sure the bylaw committee will come up with something too.
Yeah, I thought it was a good start and maybe a little bit of verbiage changes when we get to the bylaw committee. But I think overall, like the, the spirit of it is a good start. And I don't think we need to go crazy with adding too many other things to add to it at the moment until we see how this works out. And it can always enhance, but harder to take away.
Yeah.
There's no other thoughts. I'll entertain a motion then.
I can call the motion. I make a motion to refer the proposed bylaw regarding transparency of East Long Meadow employee contracts and salaries to the bylaw review committee for recommendation to the town council.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Okay, next, under old business, we have a charter amendment update from our town clerk.
So we had a special meeting March fifth where you approved the proposed charter change. Next morning, I sent it to the Attorney General's Office for their review and approval, which I heard back from them on March thirteenth, which was great. So right now I'm working on a notification to the voters, which is required. I got prices for postcard and letter. I think the postcard's the way to go. Some of them, I'm almost done designing that. That'll be about thirty four hundred dollars to send out to all the households.
Why'd you look at me?
Money. And then, of course, it'll appear on the ballot on June third. So I hope that postcard will, like mid Mayish, it'll remind people to vote, things like that, so.
Okay, cool. Great.
So before then, is there funding in the budget or are we going to need to make a transfer or something?
Okay.
I don't have the money.
Who should we get? Kim will magically make it appear in your account.
We've worked with PIP before. They do our census mailing. They did this this similar thing with the representing. They do a good job with it, so.
Great. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Hey, new business, we have a session of a proposed zoning amendment relative to private cars.
Right, great.
Hi, Rob.
Think I'm a frequent flyer at this meeting. Wow, zoning changes.
Hey, Rob.
Hello.
How are you?
Doing good. So how do you want to proceed with this first reading?
If you wanted to just give a brief overview, maybe whatever you put in your memo or maybe some of the context as to how this came about.
So I'll give some brief background. So the planning board brought this idea, they're not the last meeting, but the meeting they had me look into crafting like a small bylaw addition for private sales of used cars on people's private property. I know that might be ambiguous enough to include used car dealerships or people who sell cars on private properties such as dealerships or car auctions. In this case, it's just for individual who owns a piece of private property. It could be somebody's home, could be somebody owns a building in general, regulating their rights to list a car for sale on their property. So the planning board, I guess they saw it as something they wanted to start tapping the number of that you can do within a calendar year. And we did kind of go through one or two renditions of this before they sent it to the council for their initial consideration. Overall, it would limit to just two cars that you would list for sale on your property within a twelve month period. But you're going to do one car at a time within thirty days. So you don't have a car for sale like every week or something like that. The inspiration was pulled from other towns in the county such as Ludlow and Chickapie, which already have bylaws that are actually a little more restrictive than this one. Just a rule of thumb, the R M V unofficially says that if you sell more than three cars within a twelve month period, you're technically a used car dealership that needs a class two license, which that was a little bit interesting. And this wouldn't be a detriment to any car dealership that's looking to open in town because they would already need a special permit. This is not something they would need approval from the planning board or the town in regards to doing. It's just limiting their, the number that they can have displayed on the property at all times. So that's pretty much the gist of it. If you'd like, we can go through the text. I believe it's in your packets. It's just one addition to, sorry, I have to pull it up. Section four fifty three point three, which is titled Additional Use Dimensional and Density Regulations. And it will be added as a new subsection ten titled Used Motor Vehicle Sales on Private Property. So that's pretty much the background. Be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Are there any questions?
This is, oh. This has been a problem on and off for years. And my question is enforcement. How, what's, what's in place to control the person who has a used car license from another community selling a vehicle a week, a vehicle a month, every month? How is that, I mean, is happening? How is that? Any idea how that can be enforced?
So I say the same answer for most zoning violation or forcing related issues. It's just a matter of people filing complaint. If the building commissioner drives around, they notice that there's a car on somebody's front lawn being sold every week. It's one of those mechanisms that usually, the complaint driven structure is what gets us informed about what's happening in these situations. And that's, that's how we would continue to do it. In this situation, we just have a legal mechanism to prevent more than two cars per year being sold on somebody's property.
Now, I may have missed it, but the car doesn't necessarily have to be owned by the individual, or does it?
So it has to be owned by either the property owner or tenant. So it could be a renter who lives there, it could be a business owner as such.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy?
Well, my question was the motivation for this addition to the bylaw was more out of prudent practice and trying to get in line with some of, you know, the practices of adjoining town or budding towns versus the planning board, it feels there's, the issue was troublesome and felt that it was a need to begin to regulate it.
So I felt like it was a little bit of both. I think the planning board saw this as a constant issue because there was, I think there was a business on North Main Street had a boat for sale for several weeks.
Still does.
Still does. And I think the board felt that it might be a detriment against abutting property owners to see something listed for sale for that length of time. And that's the impression I got from them when we had this discussion.
Thank you.
So through the chair?
Sure.
So currently, doesn't our bylaw prohibit if you're a business owner selling something out? So if that's still there, that would be a zone of enforcement issue currently.
So state law allows for it, especially for used cars. It could allow for municipalities to regulate it as well, so.
On business property, not on residential property.
On business property, I'm not fully sure what the regulations are. But I know on residential properties, they have the state protection unless municipality regulates it.
So on a business property, especially, let's say, a restaurant?
Yeah.
Possibly under special permit. Special permit definitely doesn't say that they can sell items like that outside. So again, I would think that's a zoning issue. With that being put aside.
It's only if, sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean.
I have some concerns over the wording as far as property owner or tenant. So I don't have any kids, but let's say I did and my daughter is looking to sell a car. She's not the owner of the property. She's not She's not technically a tenant. Um, I would think that we need to adjust some of that to. Maybe lives at the premises or something on that idea.
That's what tenant is, is somebody who has a lease to live on the property.
Pays rent.
Pays, yeah. So we just have to ask for that proof.
Oh, no.
I mean, you could be um.
Pay rent. I know in my day, everyone.
I had to, yeah.
But again, I, I, I think there may be some adjustments in uh the wording and stuff.
You could probably include it to say uh individual pays rent to use the premises. As like an additional explanation of the.
Where resides at.
Yeah.
You know, immediate family member of the owner of the property.
So I, I do think there's an issue in town. I don't think the issue is as much with residents selling their personal vehicles. Whether it be one, two, or four a year. I think this has to do with multiple people in town. That have decided that it was easier to do a used car lot on their property and sell a car every two weeks or three weeks. Instead of going out and buying, getting business property and operating out of there. And that's, I, I know of a few in town.
Location, location, location.
Exactly, and um I believe we um in the past, the police department uh discussed one.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't on the person's property that was selling the car, they were paying someone else to use their front lawn because it was in a. High visibility area. Um, and again, through some great work um between Marilyn, police department. They were able to come up with. I don't, I don't want to hurt residents that aren't doing anything wrong. They go on uh Facebook Marketplace, you know, post their car for sale and they're trying to sell it instead of turning it in. But I also see the need to do some type of language to try and prevent someone that is doing something illegally. Um, it's, it's a tough balance. And I don't want to hurt our residents.
No.
But with that being said, I do think there's enough here to send it to the planning board with some of our thoughts, adjust. And bring it back to go to our subcommittee and stuff.
I do have a question, actually, to add on to that. Um, the planning board didn't really. seem to be up for this specific idea that I brought to them, but what if we consider limiting it to just residential properties? And ban it on commercial and industrial unless you have a special permit to be a used car dealer. Or to sell the other vehicles that are listed in this definition, which includes boats, RVs, campers, uh motorcycles and off-road vehicles. Or is that a too limiting?
So what happens with the business owner that has a business vehicle, puts a for sale sign on it, it's parked there? Is he now in violation? He's selling his own vehicle on his own property. Um, again, it's the.
I guess also when you think about tenant, does tenant also apply to a tenant of commercial property? Or does that not count in this situation? Cause why the word tenant was, I know, why tenant was kind of left ambiguous the way it was because it's not just a residential tenant. It's also a business owner who could be doing what you just said. So I think if we make it legally resides on the premises, that means a tenant of commercial property. Wouldn't be able to do that. That's how I would interpret it. So I think it just really depends on who we want to have the ability to do this twice a year.
And again, twice a year, so.
Calendar or?
I'm, calendar.
I'm the parent, I sell a vehicle. Each of my kids want to sell their vehicles. Which one do I tell? No, you can't.
Whichever's your favorite.
Shopping, right?
Again, it's probably never gonna come to that because no one's ever gonna say anything. Um. It's just, it's the place that you see the vehicle for sale and all of a sudden next week, it, you know, it's a different vehicle and the week after that. It's a different vehicle and it's like all the, how many vehicles do you have? Um, come to find out quite a few.
You know, I wonder if the um R M V um or wherever, you know, when you sell a vehicle. Is it registered anywhere that there would be a listing um in East Long Meadow that would say, okay, East Long Meadow, you've had. Twenty vehicles sold at this particular address in a six month period, you know, that kind of thing. I don't, you know.
So I know when I did a private sale back, I'm from Delaware, that's where I sold my vehicle. Usually they just take the car title and like write. When you sold it, who you sold it to, and you take it to the registry.
Yeah.
And then you just do it there. I believe it's similar in Massachusetts for private vehicle sales. And I believe they just show it on the back and then that's processed and you get a new title. Or you just keep the same one, I believe, and they update information. I'm not really fully sure what the process is.
You turn over your title, you sign on the back who it's going.
Yeah, and they take it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really quick process, actually. It's very easy. But yeah, the, I, I, there's like no way for them to tell the town. Like who does this? I mean, it's just up to us to kind of just know from looking around and getting complaints about it.
Thank you.
Do you have anything, sorry, through the chair? Do we have anything through the building department as far as number complaints on different locations?
So not for this one specifically. Um, I know it's for commercial vehicles parked on private property. It's been one we've been hitting, but that's about it. But.
But I know it's happening.
And with. Happening, yeah.
Yeah.
And we now have the, the complaint form online. And so that's all getting tracked and you know, ask that question again in ten years.
In a month or two.
Oh, yeah, but all, all of the complaints are now tracked and look, you know, check up on them. So we'll have a record soon.
And we're still trying to get that system out to people who would complain about something like this, so they can.
I have a question.
Um, and just something to think about. So I live on a main road and I think I've done this in the past. A family member. Said, can I put my car on your front lawn or a driveway facing the main road? And I said, yes, but they don't reside there and it wasn't my car. So would that not be allowed with this?
Technically, yes, it wouldn't be allowed.
Only car I've ever sold there. So I don't know if that's something maybe we can kind of think about.
Where do I find that complaint form?
Yes. So it sounds like um that's what we're trying to prevent. I, I think I got the impression that people come from other towns to do that here on people's private property. Am I mistaken on that?
Yeah, as a, as a general, as a general noticing of things from someone who's been in town for a while and was a long time ago as well. There are busy intersections that always seem to end up with a car on the corner with a for sale sign. There are more than one occasion and more than one location where that happens.
The situation that Ralph referenced was a home that was owned by someone who was not there. Renting it out to someone else.
Yeah.
The agreement was made with the homeowner and the rental had no, the renter had no choice. But there were vehicles, sometimes two, three a week on the corner of, on the front lawn. And it became a real hazard when people stopped to look at the car. And, and it was a dangerous intersection.
Yeah.
The police chief got involved, went to the owner. And basically said, knock it off. And the whole thing ended up, but the person who was selling the cars is still selling them in town in other places. And we know it. It's really difficult, but um I would like to see that controlled, but I, you know. And it's been, it's been complained, I've never been complaints before, just keeps coming back.
And also, when you think about it, if we allow for that, it might create the slip or slope that leads back to that because. How can you ask for some way of proof that's a family member? Like it could be that individual and say, well, that's my cousin Tom. You know, he sells car, is, he's related to me, you know, I'll let him sell my car, his car on my property. I mean, that's just, it's hard to really ask for proof for those things. I mean, we don't really have to have them provide us a DNA test or anything. But I think.
It's only two vehicles.
Yeah.
Budget time.
That's what I was saying.
Doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
Whose vehicle.
It is, right.
As long as it's limited.
That's true, and it's hard for us to kind of really prove that.
Right.
Right.
I think it's just.
Back to enforcement.
You got it.
Which is the whole chapter four fifty, isn't it?
And if we know for a fact somebody is constantly selling other people's cars on their front lawn. Then this gives us a legal mechanism to tell them to stop.
Right.
If we said you can have family members who don't live in town sell their cars on your property, that might be hard, hard to enforce. Cause we're gonna be asking for personal information of this other person and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as there's limited, what is it, two in a year?
Yeah. It's just frequency.
It's not gonna do very, they're not gonna do very good business if they can only sell two in a year.
Alright. Yeah, I think if you leave it the way, you know, kind of do like the property owner, tenant, or the only people that are allowed to do it. That would work out a lot better because it wouldn't really prohibit, as I mentioned earlier, commercial tenants or residential tenants from being able to do this. Legally speaking.
Yeah, I guess my take on it is I have a lot of concerns about it and generally I'm not in favor in the way it's worded at the moment. I can understand not trying to prevent, you know, this sort of quasi-used car lot situation things from happening. But I also think it has the potential to, like some of the concerns mentioned by others tonight, to sweep up a lot of other people that. I honestly don't care what someone does on their private property if they're trying to get rid of a couple cars. Like, I don't think. The whole nosy neighbor thing should be that big of a deal here. Um, that's just my take on it.
And I think most people obviously are following, you know, the rules. It's just a couple bad eggs.
You're probably right.
Yeah, and I hate to see us put in a lot of rules for a couple people that we're concerned about and we end up making it a mess for everyone else. And the enforcement part of it too, like, you know, who's gonna keep a calendar of, oh, you sold the car today. You can't do it again for six more months.
I would assume though, if there's a neighbor that's very aggravated at it, that they're gonna take pictures and document.
Someone doing it, they, that, the neighbor should do that.
Right.
You know, we also have a drone. And, no, I'm serious. And so, you know, the used car lot is in town. Um, you can't see it from the road, but you can see it if you're in the neighbors next door and you go in the back and look over the fence, you can see it. It's there. And, you know, it's, but a drone would show that. Is that?
But the drone is not allowed to fly over anyone else's property.
I mean, the building inspector can't have the drone.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
I, I would still like to see us at least send it in and see if we can adjust language and all to get it. Um, so that we're all okay with it. Um, it may work, it may not work, and at least this way here, it doesn't cut the process off.
Is there a motion?
I may, no, go ahead. I make a motion to refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendment regarding private car sales to the planning board for recommendation to the town council.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any further discussion? Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And now, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Rob, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
I'll follow the way it is for now. I'm good.
Okay, next, under new business, we had discussing advertising and banners on town fields. Uh, so this topic had sort of come up over the last few weeks, especially part of the budget discussion in town, kind of looking at. Revenue sources and expenses and so forth. Um, and whether it was even allowed, we had thought that it wasn't, but we. Weren't sure where it said it wasn't. Um, a lot of research, so thank you for that. I can try to summarize it, but I don't know if you'd be better suited to summarize your findings, if you don't mind.
Sure. Um, initially, um, we looked at the, or I looked at the zoning bylaw. And I looked at the signed bylaw, which is different. It's created different in each district. The residential district. Has a certain set of standards, commercial, business, industrial, garden park and so forth. The only reference to banners in, um, and I'm assuming that's what will be displayed on the fields. The only reference to banners um would be under temporary signs. Where you can go to the building commissioner and ask for a um, a permit for a temporary sign. And I believe it's maximum ninety days that they could have that sign, if that's the building commissioners. And if the building officials agreed to that. But there's nothing that addresses this specifically. There have been discussions before. And um, a lot of discussion focused on, um, not so much the banner on the signs, but what they were saying. And um, there was concern about um perhaps the fact that all of these signs would be on fields. Where our young folks would be more inclined to be playing, that um we had to be extremely careful. What the signage said. Um, the, I reached out to Donna Prather in the rec department. And she told me that, you know, there's nothing that they have for park and rec in terms of their property. And right now, we have what the schools have, but they're not, and they're not dealing with fields, at least. I don't see it there. Um, Donna explained to me that um, a lot of times the um. The athletic associations go out and raise money. There was no mention of money in what we looked at in terms of a policy. And it was just an example, I realize that. But um, you know, there was a concern about that kind of thing. Who gets the money? Um, and what's it gonna be used for? Um, and, you know, obviously, there's no bylaw that's written. Or there's no um memorandum of understanding or a policy that addresses this right now. She did tell me that um, there was a situation at the high school um during a football game. I don't know when, I don't know who was playing whom, but there was a banner on the fence advertising a firearms shop in town. And there were guns in the picture. And that raised a lot of uh red flags to the folks that saw it, and I understand why. Um, so that's a thing that if we were inclined to move forward, um, that that's something that we would have to be very specific about. In terms of the criteria. Now, you can say um that it's, it can't be offensive, it can't, you know, can't be political. Can't be religious. Um, it's tricky as to what we, you know, what the advertisement, how we could control that. And I think there needs to be um some sort of um oversight if we go forward with this. Um, because it's happening. I don't know if it's happened more than that one time. Um, where there was a banner on a, on a school property. Uh, I can't speak to how it was dealt with. Um, but um, it happened. But it was one, one case. I've said, I mentioned to Connor when we talked about it, that perhaps we need to think about what we might be able to do. Um, and I'm not looking to loiter up the town, but I look at Picknelly Field as you leave Long Meadow and go to the um highway. I mean, it's a pristine field. It's got, you know, flags, it's got green turf, overhead lights. I mean, it really looks like a neat place. And um, but I don't, I've never looked to see what's advertised on the, on, you know, on the fence or on the, on the field. We could suggest proud, you know, proudly sponsored by Dunkin' Donuts um for East Long Meadow Athletics. I mean, we could do something like that rather than um a, an individual putting their logo on the. On the, you know, the banner if we, if that were something that we would consider. It's just a lot of, you know.
I think it would be okay for the company to have its logo there as long as they're not in the banner, selling the product. But as you said, Dunkin' Donuts proudly supports East Long Meadow.
Athletics.
Athletics. That's, to me, is okay.
Right, absolutely.
But then, at what point do you saturate every field with a parade of banners? And when they begin to show wear and tear, how do you refresh it? I mean, there's a lot to consider.
More importantly, um, the reason why Connor was approached was a, a venue or an ability to raise, generate funds. And how much money are we talking about in terms of advertising a banner? And it, I would think that a um, a business. If they were limited to this business proudly supports. A business, if they were limited to this business proudly supports. It may not be worth it to them because it really doesn't sell their product and that's what they wanna do.
Right.
So, um. I don't know. It's Connor's.
My thought was to at least have the discussion before anybody did any further work on it, just to see what. The council's appetite was if we wanted to move forward and investigate, maybe there's other similar communities that have. Stuff or take a look around at other fields that might have advertisements and what they're doing.
So, so you, the banners would be. On the fields and that would be in exchange for a monetary donation?
Possibly.
Possibly.
Well, but that's what, that's what the interest is.
Yeah. Because I, so this has come up before and I think something happened like this at Maple Shade where a couple parents. Whose business is landscaping tried to. You know, tidy up the fields. I think there was an issue with the lawn mowing at like Maple Shade where there was like clumps of like brass everywhere. Cause there was no bagger. Could, would it be something in, in that respect too, like care of the fields or just, like, could we go to that step? Or is that like a DPW kinda?
Adopt a field, something on that idea like in Springfield has adopt an island.
Yep.
Where you can adopt it and in return for maintaining it, taking care of it, you're allowed to put.
But I think when they brought that up at Maple Shade, they were kind of, they kind of were met with. The DPW contract, something, and I'm not sure if that makes even sense, but that's what I remember. So was that a possibility or is that not even?
I have multiple thoughts, but.
In Springfield, I do know at one point they had an issue with, with the adopted terrace. Designed like that where someone would adopt it, they might take care of it for a year or two, the signage they have, and then they just fall off. So that turned into a monetary donation for the sign. The money would go to the park department. And they would pay for the maintenance of, so they give somebody a dollar, figure out how much it would cost to maintain. That terrace for however, how long and, and that's how it ran. On the other side of it, I just by chance happened to be having this conversation with my boss today. Um, he was the, um, president or director of the Booster Club in Wilberham. In association with the, with the, um, miniature athletic director. So the Booster Club there would raise funds separately from the school for equipment and some other type of purpose, both strictly for that. I, I, I can't quite recall what Spec Pond looks like and I can't remember if there's like a bunch of. Signage up there as well.
Yep.
So maybe just talking to some other communities like the Springville Parks and Rec Department, how they design those programs. But I, I'm pretty sure for a lot of them, there's like a five oh one C three attached to it where the donations go to. And then they, they discuss it, you know, between the organization, like athletic director or recreation director about how to use those. Funds, but the other side of it, so what he clued me into was, you really gotta be careful, especially with. Parents who feel really, um, committed. When they're, especially when their son and or daughter are on the team, they want new, you know, something outside the scope of what the money's supposed to be designed for. So I, I, I think, you know, maybe we look at this and then farm it out to the appropriate department or, or people who are asking. You want to do this lift and establish a five oh one C three, you can do it and then come up with some type of aesthetically pleasing way to, to do so.
It's complicated. Okay, let's move on.
I just wanted to point out, under the zoning bylaws, when you look under definition, um, a banner is nothing more than a type of sign. Um, so any sign by law includes banners. Um, it includes basically any type of, uh, lettering or anything that calls attention to it. Um, doesn't even have to have wording on it. It could be, you know, birdhouse with a bluebird and. Name of the company is Bluebird something or other and, so, so we do have. Some language in here for the banners and stuff. Um, I do remember. And I can probably go through my thirty volts and dig it out. Colin Drury had brought this forwards through the rec department. And I think he brought it to the planning board and he had a whole, um, packet. On a suggestion as far as for, um, banners to be put up, um. Like on the fence at Leahy Field, uh, for the summer and how to go about it and. I just don't know exactly where. That proposal went. I know it was never finalized, never adopted. Um, I'm not sure if it was ever put into the record, um, with the minutes, which we know it. It's probably supposed to be when you're submitting something, but it doesn't always happen. Um, but there is something that was put together by rec years ago. And again, I, I, I think Picknelly Field. Um, I have no issues with the banners. I drive by and I look and I'm like, how did he get his up? I, I have concerns as far as who's doing it and where the funds would actually go to. Especially, you know, if it's on school property, does it go into a general account for the school? Does it go to the five oh one C three that's in charge of, you know, football or baseball or something? Uh, if it's on town property, you know, and I think that's something that we really need to look at.
Just a point of information if I can. I think the school policy. Around signage on their fields, uh, might. Since it's already established and it's, it's been there in place for. Several years, wouldn't. I don't know, can we regulate what signage could go on a school field? Wouldn't their policy already take precedent?
So can I?
If it's in a zoning by law.
So in our.
If it's in a zoning, okay.
Our charter specifically says the town manager is in charge of all properties of the town.
I understand that.
And so I'm thinking once the charter went into effect. The right to do stuff on properties went to the town manager. Again. I don't know chapter seventy and everything. I haven't, I haven't made it to chapter seventy under mass general law yet.
No, it's a question to be asked, I suppose.
Yeah, I just.
There, there's.
I just wanna make sure. And that we don't have two completely different policies.
Right, so to follow on that, whatever gets ultimately developed. Needs to be able to somehow dovetail with the spirit of the school, I would think, the spirit of the school policy.
Right, which one suggestion, if we wanted to move forward, there could potentially be an ad hoc committee to. Have a school committee member and a counselor and a planning board member or something and. See what everyone's thoughts are so we're not all going in different directions with different policies. Did you have something to add, John?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, when kind of thinking about this ahead of the meeting, I felt like, I, I, I think it's an interesting idea. Um, I think making sure that we have clear kind of procedures on. Who's approving or denying, because you know, there could theoretically, I mean, it's unlikely, but maybe a banner that may not be suitable. Or a type of business or something that may not be ideally suited to, you know, for children to be seeing. Um, on a regular basis. So I think having clear guidelines, but also. Being, you know, a free speech issue, just being mindful of like, we're not arbitrarily. Denying people on certain, you know, having clear standards. So I think that would be really important before we actually. Approve some type of, uh, or consider approving some type of policy.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, there, I do have a few thoughts. I don't know how many I wanna get into at this particular moment, but, uh. Yeah, Ralph, uh, it, our sign definition basically means everything. We had this conversation last year with a flag, right? So everything is a sign. The, the, the advertising and I think like John just said, the, the guidelines. Is just by putting things in place that your sign can and cannot say is probably gonna be. An issue with the first amendment. So, uh, as of this moment on town property, uh, it's no to everyone because. It's not a discriminatory answer. It's either yes to everyone or no to everyone. And as soon as you say yes. You're opening yourself up to a wide range of, you can say whatever you want, right? I mean, there is a first, I mean, obviously there are consequences every time we open our mouth. But you can say whatever you want and every time I talk to our attorney or ask for an opinion about. Anything that touches the first amendment, the answer is usually, usually stay away from that. So there's plenty to talk about here and I think we should, cause I feel like I've heard a lot. Spec has, Spec Pond has come up since I started working here. Um, there, that's a little bit of a different animal that, that's an endowment and that, that's sort of privately done. Where we start getting, if there's twelve signs in the outfield. Who gets to pick which twelve go on there if fifteen people wanna go on there? And who's worried about discriminating who's the people on there and, you know. I'll just use an example, why is Page landscaping on there and I didn't get on there, right? So we, we just have to be, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No.
You were, you're right there. So there are a lot of things to talk about here and, and I know it would be easy to say. You know, why can't we just let the kids put up the softball banner? Like, they should, I mean, good for them, have a good day, right? Like they're, they're having, they're supposed to be having fun there. And you want that to happen. We just have to, again, we have all these laws and we have to enforce them the way that they're written. And the way that the lawyer tells me I have to. So. We just have to have this conversation and, and make sure it's all thought out and think of all the things because everything gets sticky.
Yeah.
Especially in this sort of world.
My question is, if I may.
Sure.
This whole thing started to raise revenue. What kind of money are we talking about?
Well, I guess I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I don't think it would be a substantial amount at all.
Maybe we should think of other ways to fundraise instead of, you know, if it's gonna be that. Troublesome trying to figure out how to make everyone happy, um, without taking away anyone's, you know, rights of expression and. I would think perhaps, maybe we can have a lot of bake sales. No, I'm serious. It's. The whole purpose of this coming up was to raise money.
Yep.
And, um, if the money isn't that lucrative. I don't know.
Well, there, there's. I think that's something to look into, like, what do they pay for a sign over at Picknelly Field?
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's more than we think.
It might be, maybe it isn't that, that one time, oh, good, now my sign's up there. It may be, as you said, around adoptive terrorists. Uh, it's an annual fee which goes to the parks department to help maintain that field.
But it's advertising and that's, that's the question too.
It's exposure of your product, right? There's a lot.
There.
Lot of angles here that have to.
Very, very well said.
So I would suggest our president analyze and. Give that to us. How's that?
Yeah, which I'm happy to move forward. I just wanted to see if it was the council's pleasure to have an appetite for it or if we just wanted to say, nah, we don't. Need to waste time on it now. What does everyone think? Had to continue researching at least.
There's a lot of, e- even the school one, like somebody said, is, is well written and it, and it points back to our bylaw and our bylaw does a decent job of. Making sure that signs aren't in disrepair and are a certain size and so I feel like there is an angle here. Uh, but there are a lot of things to think about, uh, and a lot of legalities as well, so. But I certainly, so we say all the time, we gotta have all the conversations. Doesn't make any sense not to.
I'd like to at least know what we're talking at for funding for the signage and if it's worth. Going through it or not. I mean, if you're only talking a small amount of money, it may not be worth. Going through all of the, the legal issues, our attorney may cost more than the, the banners.
Their advertising.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll continue to do some research then and see where that takes us.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have the discussion of the town manager contract and performance evaluation process. So I think as I mentioned, probably at our last council meeting, um. May first is the council's deadline if we, and that's suggesting that we intend to do this, but. It was in Tom's contract for the, as the town.
Ten year contract.
If we weren't gonna renew.
Sorry.
If we weren't gonna renew Tom's contract, that would be the last day that we could give him notice that we weren't going to do so. So I wanted to at least start the evaluation process in advance of that, um, but also. The contract negotiations that we're not waiting till June thirtieth to approve that. So if, I didn't know if the council had any particular thoughts. We had the process that we followed. Last time, which I thought worked out well, but I wanted to make sure it was good with that before we proceed with that where we had. Developed a, a few goals for the town manager and then we also had a. Evaluation form that every counselor would fill out. I believe there were. Ten question or ten categories that would be scored and then you could provide additional open ended comments or. Feedback about any topic. Does that format still work for everyone for this upcoming? Evaluation cycle?
Sure. I would say yes, yeah, seems to.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, okay, great. I'll plan to, at some point over the next week or two, to send that out to everyone so we can. Start that process and then probably at some point in. May will, uh, I don't think we'll have it in time for our next April meeting, but maybe one of our, our first May meeting or so we can. Have all the feedback back and then we'll, I think last time we also had the subcommittee of the council that. Put them all together and came up with the cumulative score and compiled all the feedback.
I think that's over coffee. The, if I may.
Sure.
Was there, I believe there was a selfie bout as part of that process too.
There was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure that wasn't.
Yeah.
Cause that's very helpful.
Again, also.
I'm good with that if everyone else wants to do that as well.
Just wanted to put it in there for you.
I remember going through this last year on our scale from one to ten. And I thought it would be better just to be one through five. I just felt like it was.
I mean, I agree.
Oh, right, okay, yeah, okay.
Bring it down to, I mean, what distinguishes in terms of. Moving to the point of, of merit increase, a six versus a seven or a seven point five versus an eight. I would tighten up personally the scale.
Yeah.
My, my issue with going one to five is we had that before. And it was either three or four and. To, to me, there wasn't enough of a range. It, it's sort of like going to a hundred. I mean, I'd rather say, hey, someone scored a seventy five than I would. Say a, a three, which to me is a sixty six.
The only reason why I say one through five is cause. Right here, the categories always exceeds, generally exceeds, generally meets, does not, always meet, frequently fails.
So there's five.
There's five standards, yeah.
Well, you don't even need that last one.
Well, that number's a zero.
I can see both of it. I like.
Baselines on one.
I like the idea of. And ten possible points sort of adding up to a hundred, cause that just sort of makes it easy, like percentage wise to see. What it might be, but yeah, having.
Scale at the bottom, I, I use that more just, hey, as a reference. And not as, okay, if he always succeeds, this is what he gets. Um, I thought that was more just, hey, guy, what are we looking at? Does he always fail? Well, then that's down here. If he always succeeds, well, that's here. I, I just. I didn't use that. I'll be true. I didn't use that last time. I based on. Okay, well, I know he does this, but maybe not quite here or somewhere in between.
I don't know, I, I just, I just, for some reason, it was.
Besides every scale. Tell me on a basis of one to ten, you know, what's this? Oh, okay. You never hear one to five.
I like one to five. All right, well, that was just my suggestion, but I guess it's okay.
Does anyone have any else, other feedback? Jim, Marilyn, John? About the scale? One to five?
One to five, yeah, or one to ten, I'm just kidding. One to five, yeah, or one to 10. I'm just kidding.
I just like to see it consistent. So there's like five criteria, 10 criteria, or somehow providing, and I, and I've never.
That criteria.
I've never seen that the, the actual.
Actually remove those.
As long as it's consistent.
We did it before. We, we used to do it on a scale of one to five. And then, and then they didn't understand, well, how'd you come up with a three point six?
I'm accustomed to like Amazon reviews.
Zero, zero.
Oh, is that three point six? All right. Five stars.
Five stars, see? There's your scale. There's the example of five.
I could always take the liberty of adding a bit more criteria of what the range are to each of those categories. And that might help clarify.
What the numbers could be.
Add five more into that.
Yeah, well, I could always try to figure.
Well, that's okay. You can need that. But we'll just do like more of a range.
Okay.
I guess. Thanks, Ralph.
Thank you. I do appreciate that.
Hey, great. So I'll send that out over the next week or so and then begin that process. If it's also the council.
Sorry, um, I think last time you had said that with the self evaluation, we did sort of, I think we gave it to you on a Monday and asked for it on a Friday. As far as timeframe. Be acceptable. I mean, do you need a couple of weeks to do one? Do you need?
Well, I mean, I.
Thirty-five minutes.
So it's, call it ongoing.
Again, I just, you know, if it's something where, hey, it takes this much time to do it. I know the last time it was like, hey, here's your evaluation and please turn it in by Tuesday.
I guess the question is, do we want Tom to have submitted his self evaluation before we submit ours? Or do we want those to be like happening at the same time?
May I?
Sure.
Okay. Um, it was helpful to see it before because we don't, we're not with Tom, you know, day in and day out. There are things that he is doing to satisfy our, the goals that we've established that we may not see and may not, you know, put a great star next to it because we don't know. I think it's important that we see it first.
Okay.
Wasn't that the way we did it?
Yeah, I couldn't remember. So how about for our next council meeting, if Tom could submit his self evaluations, so we give him two weeks? And then the council would have up to two weeks after that to finish putting our evaluation together so we could start our consolidation process in May.
That sounds good.
And then if it's the council's pleasure in terms of contract discussions, I don't know if you want me to meet with Tom and see what he's looking for. And then our May meetings, we could have our executive session to figure out contract details on the council level.
So before you go into basically contract negotiations with the town manager, um, shouldn't we meet an executive to discuss our thoughts, concerns and all before?
I'm happy to do it either way. I didn't know if we wanted to see what Tom was thinking before we meet twice on our end, or if we wanted to meet once, then meet with him and then we'll have to meet again to.
I've heard of it before.
Okay. It's good. We'll plan that for some time in May then.
Perfect.
Great. Okay. Any other discussion on that topic? Okay, seeing none. Uh, the action items will start looking at the performance evaluation stuff for our next meeting. And sure, there's things on our, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Continue the hero act or did you want to wait?
Oh, yes, that was April twenty second, right? Yep.
The numbers coming from the F O C before we go back to that?
Yeah, I think we had slated and told at the meeting, but I, I think it probably is prudent for us to wait until our first meeting in May. So genie, if you wouldn't mind reaching out to, um.
Sure. Lena?
Yes, thank you.
So that would be still your, your first public hearing for the budget too on that date, May thirteenth?
So we have a busy May. Hey, that's all I can think of. And for action items, I'm sure more things would come up, but if there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion for a turn.
Go move.
She's been made in a second. And any other? Tim?
Yes.
Kathy? Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
We are adjourned at seven thirty-six. Thank you.